Okay, I would like to call to order the Village of Lansing Planning Board meeting for Monday, December 11th, to order at 7:01 PM.
So close.
I know.
If Mike didn't walk all the way to this office.
It's unusual, 7:01 just deserved.
First item on the agenda is the approval of minutes for November 28th, 2023. Folks had a chance to comment on them. Mike incorporated those changes. Were there any other changes people wanted to make?
I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of November 28th.
I move that we accept the minutes of November 28th.
Motion by Lisa.
Second.
Second by Lorraine. All in favor?
Aye.
I have stayed.
Next item on the agenda is the public comment period. It's an opportunity for anyone to comment from the public for something that isn't already on the agenda to be discussed tonight.
Susan Ainsley reporting for the trustees.
Hey Susan.
Carla was giving her first.
I'm Carl Marso. I'm here as a representative for the committee party.
Hey Carla. Okay, hearing no other comments, I'll entertain a motion to close the public comment period.
I know we closed period.
Motion by Pat.
I will second.
Second by Jim.
All in favor? Aye. Next item on the agenda is to open the public hearing for seeker review for cluster subdivision number 2021-4464. The planning board will review the approved short EAF for cluster subdivision number 2021-4464. So this is for, this is the result of the conditional improvement for the cluster subdivision for the Beer's property.
Last meeting where we had not yet gone through the seeker review. So that is in front of us now.
Mike, anything you wanted to make comment on this?
Yeah, have somebody motion to open the public hearing.
Oh yeah, that too. I'll entertain a motion to open the public hearing. Hey, thanks Mike.
I move to open the public hearing for seeker review of cluster subdivision 2021-4464.
Motion by Lisa.
Second.
Second by Pat. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
There you go. Okay. How about now, Mike? Anything?
Okay, now I got something. You guys have in front of you the short environmental assessment form. I can pull it up here in a second. Natalie and Ray, if they were okay with some of the items on here, some of the questions might get changed, might need to be changed because your seeker is generally opinion based. And it doesn't, I wanted to find out from Ray if there was an issue, if we could change them right here, right now, so that we can, when it comes to the resolution, you're looking at the final copy. If that occurs, I'm just saying if there's a change.
Yeah, no, that's, that's fine because it's ultimately, if you folks have findings that are different, it's up to you. It's your resolution. We're okay with that.
Okay, Mike, you want me to, I'll bring it up and you want to go through this?
Yep.
You have to let me in, please.
There you go. Okay, so we'll start, we'll start with number one there. Does the proposed action involve the legislative adoption of a plan, local law, ordinance, administrative rule, regulation? No. Also a pause in between in case people do have a comment or a question that are changing. Does the proposed action require permit, approval, or funding from any other government agency? If yes, list them. Yes, Lansing Planning Board and Village Board of Trustees, New York State DEC and USACE. Total acreage 41.19. To be disturbed, 37.71. Total acreage owned or controlled by the applicant or project sponsors, 41.19. All land uses that occur on or adjoining or near the proposed action. They checked forest, rural, agricultural, aquatic, residential.
I was wondering about how adjacent the Net Hickey Park is, whether parkland should be.
Does that touch it?
Uh, I don't know if it actually touches it.
It's close.
It does.
It does? Okay. So.
I mean, no, they get right.
Check parkland on there.
You good with that, Ray?
Yeah, not a problem. That's fine.
Is the proposed action a permitted use under the zoning regulations? Yes. Is it consistent with the adopted comprehensive plan? Yes.
Is the proposed action consistent with the prominent character of the existing built or natural landscape? Yes.
Is the site of the proposed action located in or does it adjoin a state listed critical environmental area? No.
Will the proposed action result in a substantial increase in traffic above present levels? No.
Are public transportation services available at or near the site of the proposed action? No.
Is there, I was gonna say, is there bus?
No, not near, not really nearby. You have to go down to either here, Trip Hammer, or out to Warren.
East Point. No, there's not. Well, right up the road from East Point, but yeah, so that's.
No, it's, it's, I think it's on Warren Road where the stop is, yeah.
Okay. Are there any pedestrian accommodations or bicycle routes available on or near the site of the proposed action? I'd say yes.
I would say yes to that too because of the trails that are in Lansing, trails and.
Is that okay, Ray?
Yeah, yeah, I agree with that.
So we've had, I've had a couple of people question A before, and it's always the word substantial. And the definition, however you want to define it, so just as long as you know that we'll stick with no on that.
Yeah. But A, switch over to yes.
Yeah.
Does the proposed action meet or exceed the state energy code requirements? Yes. There's comment in there. It will meet the state energy code requirements and will require future coverage.
Will the proposed action connect to existing public private water supply? Yes. Will the proposed action connect to existing wastewater utilities? Yes. Does the project site contain, or is it substantially contiguous to a building, archaeological site, or district which is located on the National or State Register of Historic Places? Or that has been determined by the Commissioner of the New York State Office of Parks, Recreation, and Historic Preservation to be eligible for listing on the State Register of Historic Places? No.
Is the project site or any portion of it located in or adjacent to an area designated as sensitive or archaeological sites on New York State Historic Preservation Office Archaeological Site Inventory? No. Does any portion of the site of the proposed action or lands adjoining with proposed action contain wetlands? Or other water bodies regulated by the federal, state, or local agency? Yes. Will the proposed action physically alter or encroach into any existing wetland or water body? Yes.
And then the comment, riverine wetland or intermittent stream, various associated small wetlands, less than one acre of wetlands will be disturbed.
So R4SBC is, is, and that's the definition of what is R?
I'm guessing that's what that is, Mike. R4SBC under 13B.
I would have to find out. I don't know what that means.
Okay.
But I think the common.
No, I, no, I understand. It's one of those things I thought. So now what? Why not know, you know?
14, identify the typical habitat types that occur on or are likely to be found on the project site. Wetland, forest, agriculture, grasslands, early, mid succession.
Suburban or not?
I don't know. Is it suburban?
Mike, comments on that?
You guys, your guys' analysis.
That's why I said comments, not that, so that's why I said comments, not yes or no.
What is the definition of, it's not, is it, we've already said it's residential, which is suburban. I can pass. I don't know.
I think it's fine the way it is.
I think it's fine otherwise.
I do, I think it's fine either way, so let's just leave it.
Does the site of a proposed action contend any species of animal or associated habitats listed by the state or federal government as threatened or endangered? No. Is it in the 100-year flood plan? No. Will the proposed action create stormwater discharge other from point or non-point sources? Yes.
If yes, A, will stormwater discharge flow to adjacent properties? No.
Will stormwater discharge be directed to established conveyance systems, runoff and storm drains? Yes. Says runoff will be managed by onsite stormwater management ponds according to the New York State DEC Stormwater Design Manual? And conveyed to existing conveyance systems including drainage ways, storm, culverts, et cetera. Does the proposed action include construction or other activities that would result in the impoundment of water or other liquids? Yes. If yes, explain stormwater management retention pond, approximate surface area 2.2 acres. Impounding structure for stormwater pond will be approximately six feet high and constructed of earth and fill.
Okay. Has the site of the proposed action or an adjoining property been the location of an active or closed solid waste management facility? No.
Has the site of the proposed action or an adjoining property been the subject of remediation for hazardous waste? No. Any other questions on that? There's the EAF mapper.
Junk on the, on, attached there.
If we're good with that, I'll have David come in and sign it, but now at least you see the final product that you'd be having a resolution on.
David actually walked in. He's out here right now, Mike, so.
Okay.
Well, he's sitting out here right now. Okay, and then so we can move on to part two. So I'll read these off. If anybody has comments, let me know. I'll give a little break in between.
Will the proposed action create a material conflict with an adopted land use or zoning, or zoning regulations? No.
No.
Will the proposed action result in a change in the use or intensity of land? I would say no or small impact. Or, okay. Will the proposed action impair the character or quality of the existing community? I'd say no. Will the proposed action have an impact on the environmental characteristics that caused the establishment of a critical environmental area? No. Will the proposed action result in an adverse change in the existing level of traffic or affect existing infrastructure for mass transit, biking, or walkway? No. Will the proposed action cause an increase in the use of energy and it fails to incorporate reasonably available energy conservation or renewable energy opportunities? No. Will the proposed action impact existing public or private water supplies? No. Public or private wastewater treatment facilities? No. Will the proposed action impair the character or quality of important historical, historic, archaeological, architectural, or aesthetic resources? No. Will the proposed action result in an adverse change to natural resources? No. Will the proposed action result in an increase in the potential for erosion, flooding, or drainage problems? No. Will the proposed action create a hazard to environmental resources or human health? No.
Any comments on that?
No. They've always remembered it said.
Right, no, no, no or small, right. They start with no.
No or small. None of them were moderate to large.
Yeah.
Okay. So part three, for every question in part two that was answered, moderate to large, leave a comment. There weren't any. Were there any comments that anyone wanted to leave about anything?
No, Mike, you'll have to, you'll have to either close the public hearing now and then review the resolution. That'll tell you to go to part three.
Yep.
Okay.
I move that we close the public hearing for the seeker review.
Motion by Lisa.
Second.
Second by Lorraine. All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So then do I sign, do I sign this one right now?
You have to wait.
Oh, we have to wait till after the resolution, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, so then everyone should have in front of them, Village of Lansing Planning Board Resolution for Seeker Review of Cluster Subdivision Number 2021-4464, adopted on December 11th, 2023. This matter involves consideration of the following proposed action, Cluster Subdivision Number 2021-4464. Beer properties LLC and engineers are providing a final pledge of cluster subdivision for property parcel number 45.2-1-47.2. Which consists of approximately 40 acres of vacant land located between Craft Road and Bush Lane. On December 11th, 2023, the Village of Lansing Plowing Board in performing the lead agency function for its independent and uncoordinated, which is always funny by the way. Environmental review in accordance with Article 8 of New York State Environmental Conservation Law, the State Environmental Quality Review Act.
One, determine that the proposed action provided for here in is an unlisted action in accordance with Seeker. Two, thoroughly review the short environmental asset form and any and other, any and all other documents prepared and submitted with respect to this proposed action and its environmental review. Three, completed its thorough analysis of the potential relevant areas environmental concern to determine if the proposed action may have a significant adverse impact on the environment. Including the criteria identified in six NYCR, section 617.7C. And four, completed the short EAF.
And now therefore be a result, we've got two options. Village of Lansing Planning Board, based upon its thorough review of short EAF Part 1, and any and all other documents prepared and submitted with respect to this proposed action and its environmental review. Including any visual environmental assessment form deemed required, comments and recommendations, if any, provided by the Thompsons County Department of Planning in accordance with GML 239L and 239.
Is that a J?
Oh, 239 Allen, I'm sorry. It was a weird bracket at the end there. And its thorough review of the potential relevant areas of environmental concern to determine if the proposed action may have a significant adverse impact on the environment. Including criteria identified in six NYCR, section 617.7C. And its completion of the short EAF Part 2, including findings noted thereon. Hereby makes a negative determination of environmental significance. In accordance with Seeker for the above referenced proposed action and determines that the environmental impact statement will not be required. And then I can sign three, or we have option two, which is to find a positive declaration. So I will entertain a motion to find this a negative declaration. Motion by Pat.
Second.
Second by Lisa. All in favor? And so I will, that might assign the.
Thanks a lot.
Ready.
I think, I think we got it.
Barely.
Thank you very much.
Thanks.
Even Mike might be able to bring it.
That was good. Yeah, Mike might be able to make that, make that change right now, for you to sign if you want.
Do it.
Yeah, I'm trying, I'm trying to fill all that stuff in right now.
Okay.
Oh, and, and Lisa. That R4SBC is a DEC code, which.
Uh, I figured, but.
Which is.
Intermittent streams and things, just like it says.
Categorize just what it says there.
Yeah, that's what I figured. Oh, so it's a DEC code. Okay. Thanks.
Okay, okay. Next item on the agenda is discussion of the solar array draft law. So.
I have comments from Lorraine that I've incorporated into a clean copy.
And I have comments Lisa and I met earlier today that I incorporated into a clean copy. I think that we've answered all the original set of questions that you had in there. Lisa and I went over some of those today too. So what I would like to do, so I talked to Michael earlier today. Realistically, if we turn this over to the trustees, they're not gonna look at this one anyway, because the holidays are.
Fast approaching here in two weeks.
Almost two weeks exactly, isn't it?
Exactly.
There we go. Look at that. So what I would like to do is send out a clean copy of this to everybody Wednesday, hopefully in the morning. I just got a few more of, of your comments to, to combine in with what Lisa and I did today. And then get everybody's comments back. I'll put in the email probably by the very early January, the second or third. I don't want to say by the end of the year, because again, I know everybody's very busy here with, with things. So. But then get all your feedback prior to our first meeting, which is January 8th. At that meeting, we'll set aside some time to run through any outstanding items that might be on there or any questions people might have. And at that meeting, if nobody has any other comments or questions, we will vote to pass it along to the trustees.
I don't think there'll be a meeting in January.
Really? At all?
What?
Well, the first Monday is New Year's Day.
Oh.
Second meeting?
The third.
Oh, the trustees.
That, I know.
Yeah.
Trustees, first and.
Oh, and then the second.
And the third Monday is Martin Luther King Day.
Well, either way, I would like that to remain in the timeline, otherwise we're pushing it, so.
I was gonna say, I want to move this out of here.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Oh yeah, that's a.
We have a bye month.
Impressive.
A bye month. But yeah, so we will, we'll go over at our first meeting, January 8th, and unless there is something that we can get through at that meeting, we'll, we'll vote to pass it along to the trustees and they can have at it. Once we do know when it's going to be on their agenda to discuss, I'll be at that meeting, and if somebody else wants to join too, they're more than welcome to. We should probably have a couple of people there that, you know, that worked on it, so. But once we know when that is, well, we can discuss it, because like you said, it probably won't be January. But yeah, I'll try to get that on Wednesday, probably morning. If, it probably won't be tomorrow, maybe, who knows, but.
Definitely Wednesday. I just have a few more things to get put in there. Did anybody have any questions on the last round of changes that Pat made for the permit piece?
The last round was the colon?
I, I immediately checked to make sure.
It's there.
It is there. Although, you know, I had a thought when I'm looking at this, why would you even put a colon out in it?
To be consistent, there's a colon everywhere. It's good.
Everywhere else.
Everything in the table has a colon.
I've been thinking that. Why do we do that?
Wouldn't need to, I guess.
Don't want to be too bad.
Well, I decided, you notice I didn't ask your, I actually didn't. This over, so I'm.
I think that was.
I did, I did originally, but that didn't, the one you sent today or yesterday.
Oh, same one.
I, oh, good.
I think that was the only change you made on here.
Yeah, I think so.
Yeah.
Okay.
And it's there. Amazing.
I just read today's date.
Yeah. Okay, next item on the agenda is the trustee.
We have to vote to pass it. Oh, good.
Is the trustee report?
They did meet.
Oh, did they?
Just remind you.
And actually, they're gonna be next week too.
Oh.
Twice in one month.
See, we're skipping out.
See, they approved a public hearing for local law C, Watts Sewer Rents. Bolton Point and Q Heights have raised their rates, so they have to vote on that. So it's gonna be next, it's gonna be December 18th at 7:30. The mayor stated a letter of commitment of approval to the Clean Energy Community Grant. Was drafted and he'll be receiving $5,000 grant. Drew Riedel announced that he will not be seeking reelection for personal reasons. He's gonna serve his term through April. We talked about Brian Rosie signing. There was some discussion about a clean energy banner. Mayor wanted to put up, but it's against Village Code.
Temporary signage.
Mix the banner. No banners.
I said no banner.
No banner. Yeah.
Yeah. Judy came in and asked me, or said they were on the front banners, I said.
We don't allow banners.
Allow banners, right. There was some discussion about the DPW using excess salt on the roads. Where that really went, didn't seem like it, it was just brought up.
Like excess isn't too much?
Yes.
Yes.
Was that like during the storm, the?
Oh, you liked the week, Tuesday before.
Wow, everybody did, everywhere.
Yes. Well, first couple you got to.
Just need to, gotta get back into the habit, right?
That's right. You know, you probably drove on campus, I know, it looked like there was more salt on the ground than there was snow.
Yeah.
We were in Maine, it's kind of about eight inches.
Yeah, right, it's still.
Everybody just goes about their business.
The mayor asked Jordy about a transfer to the trust and agency fund for the Beer Escrow. And there was some discussion, or there was. Green.
Carolyn.
Carolyn, thank you. I just got her last name here. Carolyn, serving on the, is serving as the village's representative to the Town of Lansing Committee dealing with recreational walkways and paths. I'm gonna try and tie up, start tying things together. Adjourned at 8:04.
What was the banner? I missed, I missed.
Clean, clean energy or clean energy, clean energy, clean communities. Is that what the banner was for?
The main footrest is probably made out of plastic.
Who wants to put the banner, that banner?
Across the, I don't know.
Was it the, was, was it Ronnie that wanted to put it up?
Oh, it was. Oh.
It doesn't matter, it is.
Well, the village can exempt itself from its own zoning laws, but it's probably not.
Not a good look.
Can't let Ronnie put a few stakes in the ground out front here with a banner, Mike?
Michael, come tear it out.
Well, you can, you can post, you, put it on a building.
You can do a yard sign.
A yard sign. Yeah, the yard sign.
You put it in the window.
Being inside your window, we don't really have a display.
Not, not really.
What if they do it as a flag?
No flags, they know those, those flag banners are not allowed either.
American flag.
Oh. I think it's fine.
Sorry, Pat.
You're gonna cancel the order for a banner?
Apparently they were, where did you go to press?
Well, yeah.
Should check with Mike first.
Slide after we hit the park.
Oh yeah, right. Well, I mean, we just.
Have an emergency thing before somebody noticed.
Okay, next item on the agenda is other business. There's a couple of things. One, everybody has in front of them a quote from Eric for a. Two signs, one sign?
Mike, I would feel this way to me, like it's only an order, it's only a quote for one sign, and it's do not enter.
Yeah, one way.
There's a wording, there's a wording, one way, and then it says one way, do not enter.
And it says quantity one.
Yeah, on the very first page, that's the.
There's a custom sign, and then it looks like he has a regular sign.
I will just point out that this is a quote.
Not a receipt.
And in the conditions, one, December, by December 15th, to be a receipt that he provided showing the purchase of, so.
Right, so we'll wait, well, we have a few days.
Think he's waiting for us? Does he think, did he, he had to approve this one?
Well, he sent, he sent this to me today, and I said I would take it to the planning board to see if this is okay with you. If you want me to send him back an email tomorrow, said they want a receipt?
Yeah.
He has until December 15th, and a receipt will be provided showing.
Maybe he, maybe he thought we needed to approve his order.
And show us that he's ordered it.
I'll send it to you guys.
Thank you.
I would just tell him, move forward and order it, because maybe he thought we had to approve it or something.
He just has to provide the receipt.
I think if we told him what he, what would be.
Yeah, the only thing, the only approval piece of that is Mike for the placement.
Yep. Yep, the rest, yes, a few days to order it, so.
And pardon me, just because I don't have it in front of me, we're clear that he has, or he's got the quote for the two signs that we requested. One says do not enter, and one is one way?
Yes.
Yes.
Great.
Then Mike, you sent us all a note that he's cleaned up the property. It looks so much better. Oh my gosh.
I have to try.
You did a good job of that.
Yeah, although I noticed that the trees that he planted, I took a swing by there this afternoon. There are some forms of evergreen, they're all planted like soldiers, you know, equidistant, same size, just.
Some of them are healthy either.
I don't, I don't imagine it of landscaping.
Oh, and there's, is, is there still outstanding question about whether the, he has until May 1st to do this, but phase one tree plantings are complete?
Well, I went down there, took pictures, I looked at the final, looked at the final planning, and Eric came in and I said, look, there's, there's three trees that are indicated on the north side of building two, which is between the building next to the firehouse and the road. There's three planted. And they're identical symbols to the ones he has in between the other buildings, which look like a small type of maple or whatnot. There's no trees there. Eric said to me, he goes, well, we were gonna change those to lilacs, but then they didn't. Something about didn't want, and I said, okay, so that's, that's in May, I don't, you can take that up with the board in May.
My recollection was that when he got his first tenant, who now is that Aunt One, she didn't want anything. So he didn't want to put anything in. Then he came back and said, oh, she's, you know, we said, well, we really would like you to plant something. So he came back and said, she has changed her mind, and he was going to put in some lilac shrubs. And I believe we thought that would be okay. And it never happened. So yeah, we'll see what May brings. But that was my recollection, so that I kind of didn't want to get into it at the last meeting, but I'm glad, thank you for going down and absolutely doing a, a site inspection, so to speak.
Well, I'll sum what you just talked about up, and I'll send it to him tomorrow.
Okay.
Needing the.
Updating the...
Also, I'd like to ask, so we, as a board, we approved lilacs, so we're replacing trees with shrub?
We discussed it, I don't believe it was ever approved, we discussed it. Yeah, we're gonna change it to lilacs. But cut and dry, we have a final landscaping plan that's been signed.
Yep.
That's, you know, really have to go by.
I'm gonna lilac or shrub.
A lilac is a shrub, not a tree.
Yeah.
Now, the trees that he, he had amelanchirs, which are small trees, but they're trees nonetheless, and so they would do a different shape than lilacs will do, and also, they are native. So they're a favorable thing, so I would, I would, I would request that we stick to, at minimum, the already approved plan.
Yeah, I would agree with Emile, you know, finish phase one tree planting, there is a sign, there is a tree planting plan, that's what he should follow. If he needs to change to that, he can come and discuss it.
That covers using native trees?
No, I don't think it really does.
It's whatever was approved on the plan.
It was approved, whatever.
On the, on the plan itself calls for specific species and things like that, in specific areas.
It's a little wishy-washy, to say the least, about, we prefer native plants, but, yeah, it did not specify they must be.
Because those three, I think...
The good point, though, is going forward, we're not nearly stringent enough for what, how many we want. When you drive around and look at areas that are attractive, like when I drive through the Lansing Trails, I mean, there are lots of different types of trees there, they're staggered, and I know it's been, they've been there a long while, but it's, it's very attractive, and it's appealing, and it enhances not only the community, but the real estate value. And I just don't understand the, you know, why people aren't more willing to do more landscaping, but we need to make sure they do, especially trees, as we go.
Those three, those three evergreen trees right by the firehouse, they're behind that one, you know, they, they look like, you know, what I talked about, just kind of thrown in, you know, they're trees, so put them in. It's very artificial.
But the plan, the plan identifies the species that, this is a, this is a, so, yeah, that's what was approved, so that's, that's what we should hold him to.
As a minimum, yeah.
As a minimum, yeah. If he wants to change that or supplement it with other things, that would be great, but...
I think we throw the lilacs overboard.
And I'll try to find the, what you look at with that site plan, the sign, it's kind of difficult to read the key down below of what type's there. I'll try to find the original email that came from, maybe I can decipher what it really is.
So the original approved plan called for evergreens where those were put in?
Okay.
I don't know if it's evergreen.
Yeah, the evergreens were on the back and along the side, next to the fire, firehouse, and then between the buildings, and then along between that first unit and Oak Crest, those were deciduous trees, and I believe they're amelanchirs. So, so, yeah, I absolutely agree with you, Jim, that that is kind of an unimaginative landscape, and really rather sad, and unfortunately, that's on us for approving it as a board. So I think we can maybe at some point discuss some standards that we'd like to use, where we talk about variety of trees, like how it depends, we're having soldiers of one kind over and over again.
Actually, we have a lot of design guidelines that have been kicking around in our village that really need to be revisited. A lot of them are sort of there, they just aren't part of our code exactly, but I think as we go forward, we can request those things as part of the landscaping, and when we have special permits. I think that's something we need to really start doing.
I added that either way to the, and we can, if it needs to be its own item, or if it's part of something, and we need to pull it out, or like solidify it more, but, Emile, I added that to that list of things that we went over last week to accomplish. It's just some landscaping guidelines, we'll say, and we can, yeah.
I mean, we wouldn't have to reinvent the wheel, there are lots of other municipalities that have really good landscaping guidelines, and we can just take some guidance from some other communities, so we can probably do it pretty quickly.
Yeah. Okay. John, go over this?
Yeah, I'll do it, I'll do it, Emile.
Okay, okay. So Mike had one other thing, or at least one other thing, but before that, any comments from the board?
No.
Lisa? Lorraine?
Um, no.
Okay. Emile, anything you want to, perhaps, say?
I'll just piggyback off of Mike's.
Go for it, Mike.
We just had, I know we've done one before, but when it comes to a lot line change, if, and I know all of you know this, but I just want to make sure that we know what we're talking about, if someone owns two properties next to each other, and they just want to change the lot line from one to another, in some municipalities, you basically just have to take it into their planning manager or whatever, and they'll sign it into the Department of the Assessment Department. I had a heck of a time finding where anything said anything about in our, in our code under subdivision, and it's kind of hidden away in a, kind of an odd spot, and Natalie happened to find it, and it still doesn't make much sense. I supplied it to you, as I read it more and more, I kind of dissected it, and it does somewhat make sense. But what it says in the beginning of E, it says, in terms of the section 12526, it, it doesn't pertain to 12526, which I know I'm not explaining this right, has nothing to do with 12526, but has to do with the whole 125, the subdivision. So I guess what I'm saying is, I have a commercial property, it's up at Borg Warner, and they're gonna want to come in, they want to, I believe they're gonna be selling off some part of that, so they want it to have a lot line change. And we need to review it, or at least I need to review it, because I have to make sure that wherever they're changing the lot line, that it doesn't become a non-conforming lot.
Right.
In speaking with Natalie, we're finding that because this language is, is kind of really not clear, one, we need to really change the language to make it clear, and two, if Natalie agrees, I think she recommends we go through the whole process of the subdivision, the whole subdivision process. That way, when we take a look at the plat that they show us, we go through the process, Mike signs it, and then they can take it down to the Assessment Department.
So we treat it like it's a subdivision?
We can't really determine it being minor or major, because you're not creating, we're not creating anything.
This is gonna now trigger the tree law.
This is not?
It will, if we treat it as a subdivision.
Hmm, there's a, tree law, is that from...
Special permit?
No, but no, or major, or minor.
Is it major or minor?
We do major something, didn't we?
Uh-huh.
I guess I better...
I actually have...
So, it's not, the definition of a minor subdivision is the subdivision of any land into not more than two lots, the initial lot plus one new lot.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So this is not creating any new lots, so it's a lot.
Yeah, that's...
Our thought was, at least, if, even if we don't call it technically a minor subdivision or a major subdivision, at least there should be some level of board review and approval, and then we can visit changing the language to make it very clear that if it's just a lot line adjustment, it can be approved only through Mike's office without having to come to the board, if that's what the board wants to do.
So...
Because the tree thing only applies for...
Right, so it says, any major subdivision, which would not be, or activity that requires issuance of a special permit, which is...
So this is neither of those, so it's okay.
Neither major or...
Right.
It's not, yeah, exactly.
But it doesn't trigger this, right? Because it's not a subdivision.
It's not a major subdivision.
It's not a minor subdivision.
And it doesn't require...
Well, it's unclear.
Does it require a special permit?
I mean, not subdividing, you're, you're not creating a new lot, I guess, is my point.
So what E says...
Either way, it doesn't apply.
Yeah, either way, it doesn't trigger it, so, yeah.
So this, so wait a minute.
Is that, in any case of subdivision of residential property, again, this is commercial, that shall result in the creation of no new lots, but is intended only to modify, alter, shift, or rearrange the location to the property lines of the existing lots. Such an example would be exempt from that section.
Well, wait a minute, could, the terms shall not apply.
Of this parkland and recreational area.
In any case of a subdivision of residential property, okay, but this is...
Yeah, so it's saying a subdivision, and then goes on to describe a lot line adjustment.
It was intended only to modify, to rearrange the location to the boundary lines of, but this, oh, okay, so...
But it just gives a clue that this code thinks that a lot line adjustment is a subdivision.
I see. Yeah, because of what starts, yeah.
Yeah.
Well, it's, it is, it's mer...
It's inconsistent.
It is very, yes, it isn't.
So that's the only indication that I could find, or any reference of lot line adjustments I could find in the code, which would lead me to believe this part of the code thinks it's a subdivision.
Well, you know, there's other things in our code that are, need revision, and, you know, when we talk about what we want to do next, I think we really have to do a review of the whole thing, of 145, honestly. There's so many things in there that need changing that are not, you know, we've deleted stuff that didn't get deleted, some of it's just, and I don't know how is the best way to do that, I have, I keep, I've kept track of those, but we've never really gotten to the point where, and maybe I should just give them to you, but we need to do them all at once, otherwise, Jody would be there nitpicking away.
I still have a list of them.
I do, too.
I still have a list of them that need to be done, and they could probably be all...
Some of them...
One umbrella of changes.
Yeah, I think, but I really, how could we best do that and get on with some of this, this, some of the, like, including, some places, we don't have commercial medium traffic, but it should be in there, and it's not.
It was supposed to be, yeah.
Yeah.
So, but what you're suggesting isn't fundamentally changing anything, it's really, it really is cleaning stuff up.
Review, to be sure, we think we understand what the heck it's saying.
So, so, we'll bring the slot line change to the planning board. Don't really have to categorize, it's just a lot line change.
Yeah.
And you, you think we need a public hearing for that?
I think the board should decide if they want to do a public hearing for that.
It's, it's the Borg Warner property near the residential property.
Is it near residential? It doesn't, I don't think it...
It's across the way from East Point, right?
It's not going to be us, too.
Well, it's across...
One of the properties is, one of the properties, I believe, is across from East Point, where you see the wooded lot, part of that property and a property to the north, they're just gonna move the line, and it's all because, from what I'm getting, is they're including a parking lot with one of the other buildings, so that they can split the parking up when they do sell it.
I see.
So it's, it's not really gonna be anything that's gonna be non-conforming, it, that's...
It isn't, okay.
It's, it's not a big deal, that, just a matter of, like Natalie said, if you guys want to have a public hearing for it or not.
Since there isn't really any guidance from the code, I would probably err on the side of caution and just do one.
It can't hurt.
And, yeah, in case, and revisit the topic.
And right, we should still clean this up, either way, figure out what to do with it, does it, should it stay here, do we need to clarify language, should it be its own thing, separate from subdivision, which, probably.
And it doesn't kick in the secret process, you don't have to...
Okay. Yeah, I would...
Yeah, let's have, at least for this case, I mean, not to try to set some precedent for anything else, because we might change this in the future, but I don't think it hurts to have a public hearing. Mike asked, do we want extra work?
No.
Are they on a timeline?
I would say, are they in a rush?
I'm reviewing it for you guys to go over, whatever you're gonna do, it doesn't really matter. I like extra work.
Are they in a timeline?
You're like in overtime, right?
Bonus check.
Be careful, this is on the record. Mike, do they need to fit a timeline?
Yeah, I was just saying, are they in any rush at all?
Do they have a buyer for that?
I have not heard of any timeline, they just, it was from David, Michael sent me something, and that's, he's their representative, and he wanted to know what needed to be done.
Okay. I think a public hearing makes a lot of sense. You never know.
Okay, so when I get it, you must proceed, I'll, we'll do, we'll go in that direction, then. The other item I had was, I did make arrangements for the Kewa Medical, it'll be the 14th, which is this Thursday, 3 o'clock. What took a little bit longer is I contacted, I figured if you, if you guys went there, you'd have questions on what, you know, what's this room used for, but what, so on. So there'll be a couple of Kewa Medical representatives there, they'll be able to answer your questions.
It's Thursday at 3? It's Thursday at 3?
Thursday at 3.
So should we meet inside the mall, or can you get into their new entrance yet? I...
It's today, there was still fence, fence, big fence.
Oh, I guess we should meet in the mall, then.
I will find out where we can meet, and then, because I want to talk to Carmen, he's the, he's the job supervisor, and I don't want to meet someplace where they might be doing something still, or whatnot, so. I'm gonna let the, I'll let Jody know, so she can reach out to the board of trustees and see if there's anyone there that wants to go, and then I'll also let the BZA members know.
Should be interesting.
Yeah.
Thursday at 3 or so?
Thursday at 3, the 14th to 3.
The 14th to 3.
I'll send something on tomorrow to you.
That's one time I've got a meeting.
You got like three days to live, it's...
Yeah.
And we can, that way, we'll be able to, if you didn't get us.
Yeah, seriously, hold me to it, if you don't have it by then.
You'll send out an email or a reminder.
I'll send an email confirming where to meet and what time, whether it's 2:45 or whatnot. I will probably meet you there to get it going, and then I've, I've been in there enough.
That's it.
You could give us the tour, probably, huh?
Yeah.
It's, it's elaborate in there.
Yeah, no, I was gonna say, I remember looking at the plans, thinking, oh, my word, how are we gonna find? Yeah.
Patient's gonna get lost.
How are we amazed, what do you think? Put somebody in there, and, you know, what is it, trapped room, those, what?
Oh, escape room?
Escape rooms, yeah.